Ms. Benning Court can be joining us this evening?
I'm here remotely.
Oh, okay. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Here.
Mayor Paul Jim Benning Court?
Councilmember Carrillo?
Here.
Councilmember Law?
Here.
And Councilmember Bishop?
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any public comments queued up for the closed session? All right, none? City Clerk?
None, this time.
Okay, moving along. Presentation by the city attorney, please, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor. The only items to be discussed in closed session are those listed on the agenda.
Excellent. So we are going to recess the closed session and we'll see everybody at seven o'clock. Thank you.
speakers. Keep going, gotta go like three quarters of the way out. There we go, oh, there we go. And then close out. Best thing to do is never open.
Hello, we can hear you, can you guys mute your mic please?
They get it in here?
I think so. I mean, a lot, it's just a lot of.
Larry, you're staying here, I'm soon.
Yeah, I'm not feeling very good today.
No, me either.
Make sure my mic is off.
Yeah, I'm not feeling very good today.
I think so. I mean, a lot, it's just a lot of.
I think so. I mean, a lot, it's just a lot of.
Back on the record. City Attorney, can you report out from the closed session?
Yes, thank you, Honor. There was one item on the closed session. The item was completed and there's nothing to report at this time. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, sir. We'll adjourn a closed session and we'll call to order the 7:00 PM regular city council meeting. I apologize for starting a few minutes late. Schedule a closed session at 5:00. It takes 10 minutes. If you schedule it at 6:00, it takes an hour and 10 minutes. It's the nature of the beast. So we'll, uh, let's see. Mr., have you done the pledge yet?
I have.
We'll, we'll have IT do it. I don't think I've sucked him up here yet, so. You're in the hook. So we'll do a pledge of allegiance and then we'll do a moment of silence for our troops and first responders and, and others. You want to do it from there, sir? Okay. Very good. Thank you. Fine job. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Hoffbauer.
Here.
Mayor Protim Benencourt.
Here.
Councilmember Carrillo.
Here.
Councilmember Loa.
Here.
And Councilmember Bishop.
Here.
Thank you.
Record will show Mr. Bishop and Mrs. Benencourt zooming in. Okay, public comments on the consent calendar and non-agenda items. Was there anything in addition to the items that we got?
I'll just read this, Mayor. Uh, this is the time for the public participation. If you attend in the meeting by phone, please press nine to raise your hand. If attending by personal computer, please click the raise your hand button. Press star six to unmute yourself, state your name, and begin speaking. Each speaker will have an opportunity to speak for three minutes.
Okay, so this is for the consent calendar, which is item 11, which is the South Star Engineering Agreement and non-agendized items. IT, you have anything?
Not at this time, sir.
City Clerk?
Not at this time, sir.
Okay, so the only other thing we have is, uh, we've had some written comments and those will be entered into record and be a public record. Thank you very much. Consent calendar, item 11. All items listed under consent calendar, which there's only one. Um, anybody want to pull it or motion?
I'll pull it, just for a moment.
Okay.
You know, the Pert Blossom project was delayed considerably, and I don't know why or all of the reasons why that delay took place, but it was extremely, uh, difficult for not only our residents in the city of Palmdale, but, uh, the trucking industry that was then diverted down Palmdale Boulevard, uh, causing enormous, enormous impact on that portion of the city. And so I think that the disruption has been considerable and we're now voting on awarding the project manager $385,975 in this amendment. There's been a previous amendment. And so my understanding is, Mr. Beck, that this is something that's being worked out with this company? And if, uh, there's some kind of fallback that's required in terms of this sum, that's being taken care of in, uh, in your negotiations with this company? Is that, is that correct?
Uh, being on the record, I can speak broadly, but if there is ever a point at which the city has been impacted or is subject to reimbursement, my office would pursue that vigorously.
All right, and that's something that's being taken into consideration and has been taken into consideration in terms of this recommendation that we approve this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anybody else on this item? Or, or a motion?
I'll, uh, approve.
Okay, I have a motion to approve by, uh, Mr. Bishop. Do I have a second on the item, please? What's the impact if we do not pass this?
Is that a question from my officer, Honor?
Well, um, anybody?
I guess, yeah, City Attorney, what if this, what if this dies for lack of second?
Doesn't it put us in a default, like, like we are the one that breached the contract?
Uh, so without being on the record, I will, uh, Mayor Protim Benencourt has answered it correctly.
Thank you.
I thank you for doing that.
So that, so that, is this for work that has been done or, or future work?
No, Mayor, it is work that was done. Uh, there was a time extension on the contract. Uh, so the, my understanding from Public Works is that this was, uh, the first extension was to get to December, and then the second was to get to the completion of the, uh, contract. So it's for work that has already been completed by this firm.
Yeah, well, I think this puts us at a, in an awkward position when it comes to negotiations and sets the.
I think, I think, Mayor, if, if we don't meet our contractual obligations, then we are in breach. And I think it's much more difficult to go into a court if we have to later on showing that we breached the contract. I think it's better that we fulfill our original contractual agreement, and then if there's disagreements about work or funds after that, then we can have, um, a, a discussion about it at that time. That's just my opinion.
So am I, am I sensing that that would be a second to Mr. Bishop's, uh, motion?
Yes, that would be a second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the item. Uh, City Clerk, roll call, vote, please.
Mayor Hoffbauer.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Benencourt.
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo.
Yes.
Councilmember Loa.
I'll vote yes reluctantly, and I think that our displeasure should be, uh, indicated to everyone concerned on that contract and all of the delays and all of the disruption that, that it took place because of so many months that this happened, but I'll vote reluctantly.
I think we're all discussing.
I just want that conveyed to these people. Uh, because it's not only happening there, it's also happening elsewhere, but yes, yes.
And Councilmember Bishop.
Bishop?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, item carries with, with reluctance from more than one. Excellent. Okay, so now I believe we are moving on to, um, item 12.1, presentations. Uh, these are presentations by Public Works staff. Uh, item 12.1 is SR 138 Palmdale Boulevard AD Improvement Project. This is something we've been pushing them on for quite a while now, and we're getting, um, uh, I think Terry Martinez will be given the report, correct?
That's correct. I just wanted to do an introduction of the Caltrans team.
Can we make sure his mic's on?
Good to go. Okay, yes, I just wanted to introduce the Caltrans team. Uh, they actually have six members who, who will be available to answer questions on this project and, uh, wanted to thank them for, uh, coming tonight via Zoom for the meeting. Um, so Terry Martinez, it will be the project lead, Sam Almedine, Van Tran, Peter Jones, Osama Megala, and Jane Wu. So without further ado, Caltrans.
You're up. Good evening. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen.
Hey, we're seeing it.
Okay, great. Okay. Well, thank you. Um, again, my name's Terry Martinez, and I am with the California Department, Department of Transportation, uh, better known as Caltrans. Um, Caltrans, in coordination with its consultant, is currently working on, uh, delivering the project, uh, which is located in the city of Palmdale, and this is called the curb ramp, uh, curb ramp upgrades and accessibility improvement project. Uh, currently, we are in the final stages of the project environmental and approval document and are targeting a signed, uh, project report by the end of next week. The project limits are on State Route 138 and are from, uh, Route 14 here to Avenue T, and this includes portions of Palmdale Boulevard, uh, 47th Street, and Forte Home Road. Uh, the project proposes to upgrade pedestrian facilities along the eastbound and westbound, uh, Route 138 to comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act. Uh, this is a relatively straightforward curb ramp project, and improvements are proposed at 28 locations, uh, which consist of constructing new or, uh, or existing, uh, curbs at 10 signalized, uh, and five unsignalized locations. The project is also constructing new sidewalks at 13 locations, and, uh, State Route 138, for the most part, is a four-lane conventional highway with a one-mile segment of six lanes at the west end, and bike lanes are proposed in both directions within the entire limits of the project. A total of 86 curbs are being constructed within the project limits. Um, as you can see from the table, we are placing from as little as two to almost 11, um, curbs per intersection. In addition, crosswalks, as you see here, are proposed at some of the new curb ramp locations and/or existing crosswalks that currently do not align with some of the ADA curbs. Uh, so we'll be aligning all that, uh, properly. Uh, again, this is all subject to change, um, pending the final design. Currently, there's a lack of, a lack of continuity of pedestrian pathways due to the missing sidewalks and, uh, as well as existing non-compliant curbs and driveways. Uh, therefore, this project will construct 6,800 and, uh, 6,800 feet of new sidewalk at 13 locations along Palmdale Boulevard, both north and south, uh, sides, uh, and along 47th Street as shown in the table here. Um, we have about 1,294 feet on 47th Street. Uh, existing bu- bus stops will be interrupted when working within the vicinity, but temporary bus stops will be provided. In addition, detours for pedestrians and bicyclists will be provided where sidewalks and or streets will be closed. As part of the ADA, uh, proposed ADA compliant programs, 64 accessible pedestrian signals, which are these yellow push buttons here, and associated LED pedestrian countdown timers, the hand signals, are proposed. And in addition, signals will be upgraded at various locations as shown on the table here. We have quite a few, um, locations here. And I, I just want to point out that again, this is also subject to change pending final design. Uh, currently, bicyclists travel along the outside shoulders on State Route 138, uh, 138, and the, uh, the recently completed citywide active transportation plan recommends bike lanes along the State Route 138 and Palmdale Boulevard. Uh, this project proposes class three bike routes, uh, from Route 14 to Sixth Street East and class two bike lanes from Sixth Street to Avenue T. Uh, the bike, uh, class two bike lanes are those that delineate the right-of-way, uh, the right-of-way assigned to bicyclists and motorists, something similar to this picture here, and, uh, where the class three bike routes are shared facilities and provide continuity to other bicycle facilities. Uh, we have recently learned that the city does not fully support the class two bike lanes and are looking at, uh, all separated or off-the-rope type facilities. Uh, therefore, this is something that we will definitely have to coordinate with the city early on in the design phase of the project. Um, so just kind of wanted to point that, point that out.
I, I totally agree with that. Um, this is Laura Benencourt speaking. Um, I, I cannot believe how many people I am seeing passing to the right. Um, the impatience of people has grown since COVID, and I, I worry putting bicyclists in the, the path of some of these, these crazy drivers. I, I would like to see our bicycle lanes completely separate to keep our, our citizens safe.
So what you're talk, what you'd be talking about here, Terry, would be the one that's in the, uh, upper right corner, that type of bike lane?
That would be the one that we are currently, uh, proposing in the project report, but obviously in the final design, we can look at possibly the class four, which is separated by a physical, uh, barrier type of thing.
Right, so I've seen, I've seen those with the delimeters and stuff that have been in there to help that. The one in the bottom right corner, that's the one for, uh, joint use, shared use, uh, on the roadway.
That's correct.
Right, so, Council, keep in mind, you get 60 mile an hour traffic sharing that lane on Rancho Vista Boulevard without that marking, so while we're looking at this, I think that the fact that Caltrans is looking at fixing this issue preemptively, I think, is, uh, is good, so.
Yes, so we, so we will have focus meetings with the city just to, um, have that.
Currently, there's a lack of a lack of continuity of pedestrian pathways due to the missing sidewalks and as well as existing non-compliant curbs and driveways. Therefore, this project will construct six thousand eight hundred and six thousand eight hundred feet of new sidewalk at thirteen locations along Palmdale Boulevard, both north and south sides, and along Forty Seventh Street, as shown in the table here. We have about twelve hundred, one thousand two hundred and ninety four feet on Forty Seventh Street. Existing bus stops will be interrupted when working within the vicinity, but temporary bus stops will be provided. In addition, detours for pedestrians and bicyclists will be provided where sidewalks and or streets will be closed. As part of the ADA, proposed ADA compliant programs, sixty four accessible pedestrian signals, which are these yellow push buttons here, and associated LED pedestrian countdown timers, the hand signals are proposed. And in addition, signals will be upgraded at various locations, as shown on the table here. We have quite a few locations here. And I I just want to point out that again, this is also subject to change pending final design. Currently, bicyclists travel along the outside shoulders on State Route one thirty eight. And the recently completed citywide active transportation plan recommends bike lanes along the State Route one thirty eight and Palmdale Boulevard. This project proposes class three bike routes from Route fourteen to Sixth Street East and class two bike lanes from Sixth Street to Avenue T. The bike, class two bike lanes are those that delineate the right of way, the right of way assigned to bicyclists and motorists, something similar to this picture here. And where the class three bike routes are shared facilities and provide continuity to other bicycle facilities. We have recently learned that the city does not fully support the class two bike lanes and are looking at all separated or off the road type facilities. Therefore, this is something that we will definitely have to coordinate with the city early on in the design phase of the project. So just kind of wanted to point that point that out.
I I totally agree with that. This is Laura Bettencourt speaking. I I cannot believe how many people I am seeing passing to the right. The impatience of people has grown since COVID. And I I worry putting bicyclists in the the path of some of these these crazy drivers. I I would like to see our bicycle lanes completely separate to keep our our citizens safe.
So what you're talking, what you'd be talking about here, Terry, would be the one that's in the upper right corner? That type of bike lane?
That would be the one that we are currently proposing in the project report. But obviously, in the final design, we can look at possibly the class four, which is separated by a physical barrier type of thing.
Right, so I've seen I've seen those with the delimeters and stuff that have been in there to help that. The one in the bottom right corner, that's the one for a joint use, shared use on the roadway.
That's correct.
Right, so council, keep in mind, you get sixty mile an hour traffic sharing that lane on Rancho Vista Boulevard without that marking. So while we're looking at this, I think that the fact that Caltrans is looking at fixing this issue preemptively, I think is is good, so.
Yes, definitely, so we we will have focus meetings with the city just to have that discussion.
Thank you.
On your on your driveways also, there's some areas where there's drainage swales alongside the road. And I want to make sure we don't run into the same debacle we have out on out in the community of Pear Blossom with those those little pony walls and things like that. So can we make sure we take a good, strong look at that before we start making those changes? Or is there a plan to put enclosed drainage ditches along some of these areas? I'm thinking like around twentieth east.
Yeah, that's definitely something that we'll take a look at in more detail in the final design or in the design phase. So yeah, we'll we'll definitely look at that.
Thank you.
I I have a question, this is Councilman Carrillo. I understand that you're not at the the design stage yet. But if this bike lane is going to be a part of this corridor, does that mean that then there is gonna be no on-street parking? Again, I know it's not part of the discussion at the moment because there's no design ready to be discussed. But based on this exhibit here, then there would be no on-street parking.
That is something that we will have to look at in detail as well. Currently, that looks like that may be the case, either eliminating some parking and or reducing lane widths as well.
And additional right of way is not necessary, you guys have the required right of way?
Well, that that is something that we have not fully designed or looked into as a full design yet. But currently, we are working within the existing roadway.
And and the goal is to keep the two lanes going in each direction, right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right, just make make sure that you have that outreach with the merchants and stuff along that route because they're extremely sensitive to this issue. And it's, I can, I can tell you right now, it's a sore point out there on an ongoing basis. So let's make sure that we have we have good dialogue there as opposed to having these guys coming in here with pitchforks at our meeting, okay?
Definitely, yes, but we we will start our communication with everybody as soon as we start the design phase.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, go ahead, ma'am, thank you.
When we are constructing these improvements, we will be approaching into the right of way, which will require partial acquisition at seven parcel parcels. Parcels and in addition, we are anticipating thirty seven temporary construction easements, which will be required for the construction access. Again, once we finalize the design, this may also be subject to change. Several utilities within the project limits are in conflict with the proposed improvements, and these will need to be adjusted to grade or relocated to provide the ADA compliant pedestrian facilities. Some of the utilities include some of the communication pull boxes, the fire hydrants, the water meters, water and gas valves, and the sewer manholes, as you can see some of these utilities here. And some of the impacted utility companies include AT&T, Palmdale Water District, Southern California Edison, Southern California Gas, Charter Communications, Los Angeles County Sanitation District, and City of Palmdale Traffic Signals. In addition, I'd like to point out that the Union Pacific Railroad and the MetroLink cross Palmdale Boulevard between Sixth Street East and Sur Highway. But there are no improvements within that vicinity of the railroad. Therefore, there is no railroad involvement in this project.
There should be, though, trust me. Mr. Behan is ultimate is intimately aware of the concerns over there in that area. And the problem is, we get MetroLink, UP, and Caltrans all pointing their finger at one another. So I know they they're supposedly supposed to be fixing part of that. I guess they fixed it at one point, but you wouldn't know it at this point. So just please have a dialogue with Mr. Behan and the these railroad guys, okay?
Will do, yes, definitely. And then finally, I'd like to point out also that there is no significant roadway work. You know, obviously, it's all the program locations as part of this project. Therefore, the transportation or the traffic management plan that will be in place will identify the methods to reduce traffic delay, maintain traffic flow, and provide a safe environment for the traveling public, including motorists, bicyclists, pedestrians, and those with disabilities during construction. So that is definitely going to be taken care of. Now, as far as the schedule goes, the target dates are as follows. As indicated, we are currently in the project report phase in spring of twenty twenty one. We will move on to the final design by the end of next week, which is gonna take us out to spring of twenty twenty two with the final design. It will be going out to bid and award and be awarded to, or start construction in fall of twenty two. And construction will be completed in fall of twenty twenty three. The total cost of the project is currently estimated at eighteen point two million.
Who's paying for that eighteen point two million?
And that is all I have, thank you very much.
So is this amount, the eighteen point two million, already being allocated to the project and committed? That there is no way that this could be taken away to another project?
I do not believe so, and I can have the project manager speak on that if she can.
Hi, my name is Jane Yee, I'm project manager for this project. Basically, the eighteen point two million is committed to this project.
Okay.
Yeah, it's Caltrans, my, yeah, yeah.
So I do want to say that this eighteen point two million includes all the support costs, right of way costs, everything all lumped together.
As as you know, the cost of construction keeps going up, especially concrete and steel. And since we are a year and a half away from actual construction, what would be the scenario when this eighteen point two becomes twenty point two? Because and I'm I'm exaggerating the numbers maybe, but the cost of the project.
I think you're interested in estimating it, actually. Is there a contingency, yeah, what's a contingency built into this?
So typically, at the project report phase, I believe, is ten percent.
Okay.
Or fifteen, ten to fifteen.
When construction starts, and the mayor made a point of notifying the merchants along Palmdale Boulevard, the typical way that a project like this would start construction, would it be working on both sides of the highway? Or is it doing one side first and then the other side? What makes more sense as far as the construction proceeds on a project like this?
That's a great question because we're starting in the fall. Some of these merchants depend on that season for a significant part of their revenues. So is there is there a plan? Or is there a, is there a a plan to have a plan?
I I, yeah, I can speak to that. So yeah, basically, we would normally start on one side of the road. Obviously, with the the reduced lanes, we would provide a staging to to go on one side, basically. And then we, once we finish that side, we normally move on to the next side.
Is part of the plan to divert or redirect traffic as the big rigs, the big vehicles that use Highway one thirty eight during the construction period? In other words, would they be asked to be rerouted to limit the amount of heavy traffic during the construction period? Or is that something that is based on a case by case?
That that is something that we still have to look into. I I couldn't tell you at this point, but yeah, I mean, it's it's something that we have to look into in in the design.
All right, Mr. Bishop, anything?
Yeah, as far as improvements go, is this all of the ADA type of improvements? I I know there's a lot of, it's a big, it's a big highway, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of space. What other improvements will need to be made after this? Like, I'm just trying to get a broader scope of of what we're looking at here. Like, how much, how many of the improvements that are necessary are being are being met with this project?
That's a great question, is it, does this include everything from the freeway out to Forte Hone? Is, does this make the, that stretch all ADA compliant?
I will say, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You want to take this one, Terry, or do you want me to?
Yeah, they take the football.
Okay, oh, so typically, if there's undeveloped properties, we will not be making it ADA compliant because it's. It's undeveloped. So depending on like who will develop those properties, they will come up with a plan to determine like the driveways, the sidewalks, and whatnot. Otherwise, the areas where there is pedestrian activity, those areas will get the ADA curb ramp upgraded.
Right.
So then the majority.
How much, how much, I guess, I, how much does this leave behind, I guess, is the question is like, because I know there's a lot of improvements, I'm just trying to get a bigger scope at how, you know, five years from now, how many, how many more improvements do you still need to be made? Or are there things that that can be done in partnership with the city and a contractor in which way it could save money? Because the city is, you know, we've always been looking for a way to improve Palmdale Boulevard. It's been a sore spot for the community for many years. And 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 we're so grateful that you guys are coming along and helping us make improvements on this highway. So, you know, I want to make sure we're doing as much as possible right now and and utilizing resources the best we can to try to make the best impact for our community today.
So a a large portion of that section, that sector of one thirty eight is undeveloped land on both sides of Palmdale Boulevard, north and south. So what you're then saying is that those vacant parcels will not get curb gutter and sidewalk? Is it only on those parcels that are currently developed? And the corners on the pictures that you showed were the ADA's are indicating position right now. Is that correct, is the the ones that are not developed, those will remain without sidewalk curb?
Without improvements.
With improvements.
That's correct.
Oh, well, then, that's a little misleading from what I had expected in this presentation and and the presentations at NCTC meetings that we have attended. We, at least I was led to believe that the improvements on Highway one thirty eight would include curb sidewalk and gutter all the way along the corridor on that section from Pear Blossom Highway Avenue T, all the way to the fourteen freeway.
Yeah, so the reason for that is because we want to make good use of the state funds that we have. And if we were to develop those areas that are undeveloped, what's gonna end up happening is it'll actually, later on, it'll have, most likely be ripped out again and be done because it'll be up to the the property owner, right? Depending on how they develop their vacant land. What if it's like a commercial lot? What if they don't like where we put, then put the driveways? Or what if they make it into a residential lot? I mean, we just don't know, right? So we just don't want any of that, the funds to go to waste.
Okay, so then I'll pose a question that I've been posing to the council for quite a long time now. If there was any interest in acquiring the the highway, is this eighteen point two million are gonna, is it gonna be spent on doing those improvements that you just discussed? How would, how would that negotiation be if the council were to give direction to staff to work with Caltrans to see how that could be acquired and Highway one thirty eight be rerouted? That's something that I've talked for quite a while now for.
I think someday, I think all of us want to have that happen. But I think when we previously, Mike, help me with that, wasn't wasn't that number right now? This project is eighteen million-ish. But when we did the previous assessments for the areas that had to be done, wasn't that closer to thirty five to fifty million for that area there when we've kind of thumbnail sketched this?
Yes, that's accurate.
But that, if I'm not, if I can interrupt, then that figure that you just mentioned, did that include the sidewalk curb and gutter all the way along?
Yes.
Including those vacant parcels?
Yes, and included everything, including drainage.
Okay, so then there's quite a significance because what I understand from this presentation is that Caltrans is only going to be doing those ADA improvements on parcels that are currently developed.
Well, I think when we've talked about this before, the rationale we had was that, for the most part, those are the areas where it's developed, where the people are going, and where where it becomes an issue. And on the undeveloped parcels, there's less of an impact with the drainage and with the pedestrian access. I know also that there's some areas where the Transit Authority has. Acquired funding through various grant processes so that when we have bus stops in these unimproved areas, we can do the ADA upgrades there through some some other programs in cooperation with Caltrans and getting an ADA grant on that. I think that's something else that we need to continue to look for.
Mayor, if I could ask the Caltrans rep a question, have you guys estimated the cost of the areas that you're not gonna do?
That's what we, yeah.
Because what what I, what I heard you say is that you did not want to put the money in and then waste the money because if, when it's developed, they might not, you might not put the sidewalks exactly where the property owner would want them. The fact remains, if they're gonna develop, they're gonna have to bear that cost. But in the meantime, until it's developed, it would give pedestrians access the entire route of Palmdale Boulevard, and that's what this council desires.
Not not only the pedestrian, but also people with disabilities. I mean, it to me, wouldn't it make sense to put the ramp at a corner without continuing the sidewalk for the ADA people unable to use and access the the next section of that corridor?
Absolutely.
Where there's a paved surface for them to to do. So I just wonder if that is something that is not, it's required by the ADA regulations because they can put in the the ADA ramp at the corner, and then just, it doesn't go anywhere. Then disabled people will not use, and it defeats the purpose.
Right, so if Steph can get back, I I know you probably don't have that answer on the fly, if you can get back to Mike with that number, because then we could have the discussion on either finding additional funds. But without without the actual correct estimate, I don't I don't want to. This is a great project, right? Eight, it is eighteen million dollars worth of improvements. I just don't know if it's five million dollars extra that we're missing.
I think that's what we were talking about, that when we had visited this before, I don't remember whether it was an additional thirty five million or that the whole project would be closer to fifty million.
I I thought it was fifty or sixty million, but then you're also talking paving the street and.
Well, yeah, this for the for the drainage part of it, yeah.
Since there's been an infrastructure federal bill that's coming forward, will there be funds that perhaps could meet the unmet part of this that Caltrans covering?
That, that's why I want the number.
Yeah.
Without, without the number.
Let's get, let's get that number back to us. And and also, do, does this mean that the bike lanes will stop and start?
No, that that would be continuous throughout the limits of one thirty eight.
Okay, question is, do you anticipate that there'll be infrastructure funds from the federal bill that could be used to fill the gap?
No, I anticipate the infrastructure funds being project specific. It won't be like the the funds that came came back now. Could we use some of those funds for a match on infrastructure projects? I think that's a a different area. But I don't think the infrastructure, from everything that I heard from DC, it seems like they're pro, like a Rancho Vista Grade Sep would be one of the projects. Not here cities, we're gonna give you ten million dollars each to do infrastructure work, but.
Sidewalks and curbs.
But I think that's something that we can be asking Caltrans to be lobbying for along their jurisdictional stretch of that, that perhaps they can be lobbying for that work from the state's side as opposed to us burning that capital for something that's the state's responsibility, huh? What do you think?
Seems like you just asked them.
So another, another thing that I'd like to have Steph discuss with Caltrans is the ADA. is the ADA, um, act, if, again, if you're gonna just put the curb right at the corner, uh, it, those ADA require that, um, this access be continuous to the nearest paved, uh, section, because then it just wouldn't, to me, wouldn't meet the ADA requirements, because then you're gonna go off paved surface, back to non-paved surface, and then, you know, twelve hundred feet.
That's exactly why we had to make some of those improvements.
Yeah, so anyway, if Steph can discuss that.
For the transit, for the transit stops, yeah, yeah.
I think what you're talking about, Mr. Carillo, is, uh, sort of like the bridge to nowhere, that you have ADA, uh, access to nowhere.
Right.
So, you get the ADA access, and then you run into dirt and.
Right.
This, this, this is Sam, this is Sam Almond, uh, what's being discussed is, is totally valid, and, uh, things, these are issues what we deal with, uh, on, on a lot of projects, where we have, uh, a discontinuity in the, in the system, if it was, uh, whatever, and the situation would be sidewalks, and, uh, depending on the pedestrian usage, um, what we've done, you've probably seen them in different intersections, we would put signs, there's no cross beyond this point, uh, or there's, you have to continually to go this, whatever, so we'll, we'll have, uh, uh, you know, adequate warning signs for people not to go for about four, five, six hundred feet in the heat, or cooled and cold, and then come back to go somewhere else.
So then I wonder, we then can have this discussion at the next NT, NCTC meeting, because that's something that, uh, should be addressed, I believe.
Yeah, we've been talking about it for a long time, this is the money they had, so they were going for the, the best bang for their buck, but, yeah, um.
Yeah.
Go ahead, revisit it, good luck.
Mayor, I was gonna suggest, Terry, can you, um, take the presentation down so we can see you folks? We say a big thank you, and we're appreciative for that, but just, there you go, okay.
Sorry about that.
All right, no problem.
All right, so, uh, I think that, um, we're, we're, uh, we're good with what is going on, but there's some question about, um, you know, what, what the next steps are, so I would appreciate that the dialogue continue here, and, uh, we look forward to, uh, having some further discussions with you.
Great, thank you, well due.
Yeah, Jane, I like your backdrop, I worked that building.
Thank you, that's our building.
Yep. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, well, Mike, did you have something else?
Yeah, I just wanna, you mentioned the, uh, the rail crossing in Palmdale Boulevard, the public works team is working on a project to address rail improvements, to upgrade, uh, the rail crossing there, so that is, that is in play right now. I know that these improvements are not included, but they're sort of concurrent, so we'll make sure we get the two teams together.
I just don't want them operating in separate hot holes, that's all. You've seen how that goes sometimes.
Understood.
Thank you, sir. All right, Caltrans, anything else?
I, I was saying, we did have a public comment on this issue, we can call for any other public comments.
Oh, I didn't know that we had, I thought this was just a presentation.
It is, but we got a public comment on it.
Okay, whatever.
So, we, we can file and receive that, do we have any other public comments?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, all right. All right, Caltrans, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I thought you said no.
They raised their hand at the last second.
All right, well, go ahead.
Laurel Forrest, would you please unmute your microphone?
Hello, I'm a resident who's been long disabled and had to occupy the manual wheelchair and a motorized wheelchair car for many years. I am the person who brought this to Caltrans attention seven years ago through wonderful Mr. Mike Behan. I was the one who took five hundred pictures and submitted them, did an analysis of all Route one thirty-eight, and I think, on behalf of the disability community, I exercised absolute discretion and patience to wait for this project. However, what I hear from you, making this a discontinuous route, as if it's just the flight of the hand, and just say, oh, well, in the hundred degree, a hundred and ten degree heat, here's a sign to go back, which means you can't get across town, you can't do your shopping, you can't get to the library or City Hall, and you really are striking at the heart of impatience of people with disabilities. I used to try, at risk of my own life, seriously, to get the manual or motorized wheelchair from East Avenue R, going up Forty-seventh Street, one thirty-eight, across the death-defying traffic circle, which is more than fifty percent too small for safety, and needs to be also totally expanded like those in Europe and those in Washington DC, which were designed in the seventeen hundreds, much better than what we have from Caltrans here, that traffic circle on Palmdale Boulevard and one thirty-eight at Fifty and Forty-seventh Street. However, the discontinuous nature of this troubles me tremendously, because I used to have to either travel into the truck zone with trucks and giant major rigs coming by at sixty, seventy miles an hour, or have punctured tires by going up on these vacant properties that may not be developed for another decade or two, and fill of glass full of junk, full of impediments. There's also discontinuous areas of the sidewalk where it falls into a drainage dish, falls down near one of the gas stations on Palmdale Boulevard, twenty-fifth, Twentieth and Twenty-Fifth falls into a pit, which is break your neck and die time. I would like to work directly with you folks way before the public scoping meetings that you may have, to make improvements in this concept, because right now, it is not going to serve the disability community. In addition, unfortunately, when you're talking about these access, uh, sidewalks, you hardly even mention wheelchairs of disability, you talk about pedestrians, you talk about bicycles. ADA Americans with Disabilities Act nineteen ninety, much of this has been built since nineteen ninety, and yet without compliance with the ADA. At the present time, this is unacceptable, and there are legal options.
Okay, Laurel, we're running out of time there on that, but we, we, I know you and I have talked about this, uh, I know that you and I have talked about this, and you've been in pretty regular contact with Mr. Behan, and we'll make sure that the Caltrans reps, uh, that are working this project, and the project manager, uh, touch bases with you. Thank you very much. Anything else, sir?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, all right, Caltrans, you heard, that's, that's a very active lady on this project here, so. You'll be contacted, trust me. Okay, and I would appreciate if you make sure you do the, make sure that contact goes that direction, okay? All right? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
If I may, um, I'm Peter Jones, Public Information Officer for Caltrans, and during the, uh, um, outreach on, um, the one thirty-eight, if your citizen wants to call me directly, let me give her my number, because, uh, uh, matters such as that, um, she can bring those directly to us, and we can try and assist wherever we can. Um, we don't wanna see anyone not being able to access both ways or sidewalks, um, that's unacceptable, we agree with that, so, um, please, uh, can you pass her my number, let me give it to you? I have a new cell, so it's, uh, three, it's two one three. There with me, it's five zero zero, six nine eight five, that's my direct line to my, that's my, that's my cell number, so please ever give me a call, and, um, we can, uh, hopefully address her, uh, concerns, thank you.
All right, thank you, Caltrans, thank you very much. We'll move on to the next item, which is the local hazard mitigation plan update, and who's gonna be doing their report on this, sir?
Evening Mayor and, uh, members of the city council.
This is Chuck.
Chuck, go ahead, introduce your team.
Go ahead, Nick, well, we're just gonna introduce Nick, but he introduced himself, so, go ahead, Nick.
Evening Mayor, um, this item is for the presentation for the Palmdale Local Hazard Mitigation Plan Update, um, we've selected Inner West Consulting Group to do this, um, work, and Jacob Green with Inner West will actually be the one giving the presentation, uh, Jacob Green.
Thank you very much, Mr. Godin, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, city staff, thank you so much for having me here this evening. Uh, as Mr. Godin mentioned, I'm the Emergency Management Team Leader with Inner West Consulting Group, we're very grateful to have been selected by your city to update your city's local hazard mitigation plan. We're here this evening as we kick off this project to encourage the community to engage in this process. We have an online survey for the community to fill out and go through, and I'll give the council a very brief verbal presentation this evening about what the local hazard mitigation plan is, and we are hopeful that the community will then engage in the survey process and help create an updated plan for the city of Palmdale. The local hazard mitigation planning process was devised by the federal government back in two thousand as a way of refocusing our efforts to making sure that we are planning for disasters before they occur, mitigating the impacts of disasters before they happen, instead of spending a lot of money after they happen, so trying to minimize the impact of these disasters on your local community. Your, uh, local hazard mitigation plan is in place, it's now going through the updated process, and what we're gonna do in this local hazard mitigation plan process is first identify the hazards that impact the city of Palmdale, then we'll prioritize those hazards, we will then create mitigation strategies to minimize the impacts and associated projects, so things like seismic retrofitting, things like public education campaigns, things that we can do in advance of a natural disaster in order to minimize those impacts. And the good news is, once your city has a approved hazard mitig, local hazard mitigation plan, that will open you up to significant funding streams before and after disaster to mitigate the effects of future, uh, natural and man-made disasters. Um, we'll be studying in this process things like earthquakes, floods, fires, transportation accidents, because you have major corridors through your city, drought, severe weather events, uh, power and utility infrastructure failures. Um, also, uh, as you can imagine, unique to this year across the country, local hazard mitigation plans are now including, uh, pandemic. So, we will look at ways for, hopefully there is no future pandemic, but if there's a future pandemic, ways that we can mitigate the impact of that pandemic ahead of time. This planning process is not only a partnership, uh, with your Public Works Division, overseen by Mr. Godin, uh, and our team, but it's also, uh, really important to the planning process, uh, that we involve all of your city departments, which is about, uh, providing representatives from all city departments to engage in the process, community stakeholders, schools, utilities, transportation entities, all, uh, Caltrans that was just here, all will be players in the hazard mitigation planning process and the public. It's very important that we engage the public and allow the public a voice in creating this plan, which is why, uh, in conjunction with your city, uh, we've created an online survey in both, in Spanish, it's available at your city, uh, website, cityofpalmdale.org/lhmp, that stands for Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. We're gonna keep that survey up, that community survey up for the next thirty days, looking for input from the community, it's a very easy survey to fill out, looks at, trying to understand what concerns the community has about disasters that impact the city of Palmdale. And again, I just wanna thank, uh, the city manager and the entire staff for, uh, being so helpful and, and creating this partnership in the planning process to Mr. Godin and his public works team, and, uh, with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentation, happy to answer any questions that you or the council may have, thank you.
Thank you, sir, uh, Chuck, is, uh, Mr. Godin gonna, uh, somebody spend a lot of time and effort making slides here, is somebody gonna tell us all about these?
Oh, uh, I believe, I, I'm sorry, I can't quite see, I believe that was Mr. Mayor, if I'm, I mean, is that correct? The slides were presented as some backup information, uh, for the mayor and council, uh, if you need it, it covers the information that I just, uh, reviewed in my verbal presentation.
Oh, okay.
And it's there for a reference if you need it, sir.
Okay, yeah, son of a gun, it basically says what you just said.
Yes, sir.
Uh, council members, any particular, uh, questions at this time, being that we're just introducing this item for the public input?
I just wanted to point out that, that I'm sure we're taking into account that we're located, uh, along the San Andreas Fault, probably the most dangerous fault, uh, in North America, and, uh, I mean, we're right on it, so if, uh, we had another, uh, Tahoma quake like there was in the nineteenth, uh, the nineteenth century, it would be devastating to Palmdale, um.
That was more or less what I was gonna say, is that the fault line is a, is a big for us, we've got homes built all up and down the fault line, but I think that, that would be probably take precedent, or be our top concern when it comes to, uh, pop hazards.
Yes, I agree with that. I hope that's being taken into account.
I have a, a comment or, or a question, um, for Mr. Green. Um, there is talk about another potential drought, um, in the state, uh, coming up this year. Um, is, is that being something that is being discussed, has it been identified as a, as a hazard, uh, and how would that, uh, be implemented, um, because as you know, these droughts are, are kind of typical now in the state, every now and then, more often than, than not, uh, i- is that part of the discussion as, as far as what a hazard, uh, is? And also, with the recent fire season again, with what happened with, uh, PG&E, and potentially Edison changing their, uh, delivery lines, whether being transmission or delivery lines, being weatherized or, uh, being protected to kind of, uh, mitigate for, for fires like we, we've experienced in the past. Are those discussions happening at, at, at the state or the, uh, federal level, and those are gonna be part of this hazard mitigation plan?
Yes, council member, great question, those are actually two of the identified hazards that FEMA requires that we take a look at as part of this analysis. Uh, your city kind of got ahead of the curve, um, very proactively, and in the last hazard mitigation plan, did a thorough analysis on both drought and, and the wildfire side, uh, which included a pretty comprehensive analysis on mapping impacts, the communities that were impacted, all those kinds of things, so we will absolutely, uh, take that, um, uh, suggestion, and we will, uh, incorporate those two items as part of your, uh, analysis and discussion process for this plan.
Will you do the same for the San Andreas Fault?
Yes, sir, there'll be a, a very comprehensive earthquake analysis and section, uh, as part of the plan.
In case of a big earthquake or a big emergency, um, the only access point is the fourteen freeway coming up from LA, the LA basin area, you know, besides from going east on the one thirty-eight, which is a much less capacity as the highway for, as the fourteen freeway, um, what other kinds of escape routes are, are being discussed in this plan, and is there, um, air help that can, that is being discussed to be able to assist us in case of a, a major catastrophe like the earthquake, uh, being that we have so many residents on the San Andreas Fault?
Would, would we have that answer now, or would this be something that, as he's bringing up, that we need to make sure we prioritize as a, cause I couldn't get home for days, uh, when the, the last ti, the last time that fourteen fell down.
Ninety-four.
Yes, sir, um, I can answer that, uh, two ways, uh, you're correct, will we, um, as part of your hazard mitigation planning process and project creation process, evacuation planning, funding evacuation planning, supporting evacuation planning, uh, creating public information strategies for, uh, evacuation planning will certainly be incorporated. There is a completely separate plan that's, that's called your emergency operations plan that really deals with your response, uh, we're not engaged, uh, by the city to write the emergency operations plan, you have an existing emergency operations plan, uh, you're, you're, you're in good shape with that, that's more on the response side, um, our job is to, uh, help create projects and programs that can minimize the impacts of those, and we'll make sure to include, um, projects that focus on evacuation planning as, as part of this process. I wrote that down.
I wanna raise a point, and, and it's a dreadful thought, really, but, uh, given the tensions that we have in the world today.
With adversaries of the United States, uh, and the Antle Valley being a strategic military place installation, we have an Air Force Base, we have Plant Forty-two, uh, top-secret things that go on there in our national defense, have you given any consideration that we could be under threat from some of the, some of the enemies of the United States? And how would we deal with that in terms of getting our pop, population out of here if we can?
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a really good point and really good question, so what the planning guidance, um, from the state and feds, uh, suggests is that issues of terrorism and act of war are left to the public safety entities for your community to develop the appropriate analysis and response plans. So, this plan really focuses on natural disasters, which with a little bit of element of the transportation entities, uh, and transportation, uh, sort of hazards worked in, but, uh, terrorism and, and acts of war are left to your public safety entities to, uh, plan for and respond to, it's, it is a separate process from this, uh, natural hazards mitigation plan. It is a separate process from this natural hazards mitigation plan.
That's good to know that. Thank you.
Thanks. JJ, I know that I've got, I've had the operations plan, but could we share the existing or former hazard plan and operation plan with the other council members? So they understand better what we have and what, you know, they can see the topic that they, maybe they feel was not adequately addressed since the last time we did that.
Sure.
Maybe share that with them?
And we are doing, we did interviews this afternoon for our new emergency coordinator.
Great. Okay. All right. We're good? We're good?
Just because it's not listed anywhere else on the agenda. I'm looking at it now, our agenda. We have a spot for public comment for non-agendizer consent calendar. We don't have anything for the presentations. Just ask and see if there's any public comments.
Right. Nothing. Okay.
Same for the next seven.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Chuck, anything else to wrap that up or can we move on to your next topic? Because you are the star of the show tonight.
We're good. Good, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Green and team, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mayor and council. Have a good evening.
Take care. All right, on 12.3, the Lucity Maintenance Management Software. Mr. Heffernan and so your team is going to be Maria and Jim Deo.
Yeah, and the team. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and members of city council, thank you for this opportunity. Tonight, we've come to bring you some very exciting information about the city's efforts to control the maintenance of its infrastructure and track its efforts to do so. This is a presentation of the capabilities of the new Lucity Asset Management Software. It's a powerful tool for our talent and public work staff. Just a few of the highlights of the program include equipment and asset use for life forecasting, replacement planning for infrastructure, and how that relates to budget forecasting. And then tracking of actual time and expenses by personnel and how that relates to budget forecasting. So we're here tonight to show off the initial results and provide projections for ongoing implementation of the program. Like to acknowledge the hard work, really hard work, of Jim Deo, who has been the backbone of the selection and implementation of Lucity, and Adam Maria Chow, who has been, also been the driving, the initial success and will continue to drive its success as the city's asset manager. And last, because of these two and the entire maintenance staff's dedication to acceptance of this new technology, we've been able to complete the implementation of Lucity on time and under budget. And now I'll turn it over to Maria and Jim.
Good evening, Mayor. I'd just like to bring up my slides here. Thank you for your time, Charlie. Over the past several years, we have heard a lot about asset management. Some of it has been obvious and some of it has been useful and a great deal of it has been confusing. So tonight is all about clarity. My hope for tonight is that everyone will leave knowing what asset management is, why it matters, and what value it brings to the table. Also, how we here at City of Palmdale have started to take our first steps on our asset management journey. Let's start by exploring what asset management is. Our community assets are publicly owned. These are made up of natural ecosystems like wetlands and nature reserves, the construction environment like roads, buildings, playgrounds, et cetera, and the equipment and resources needed to maintain what we have. So our sewer and drainage systems, our transportation network, our walking trails, our green spaces, our sports and recreation facilities, they all provide services that our communities rely on. Each of these assets perform a function which provides a service that our residents value and have come to expect as part of their everyday lives. Now, management by definition means to care for, to be in charge of, and to nurture. Management means that we don't wait for a crisis or service failure to occur before acting. We minimize and prevent those events through active management and formalized planning. It is about moving from reactive decisions to proactive management. Now, actively managing our assets means paying attention to both what we can and can't see. It is caring for the visible roads and hidden pipes. We need to actively manage all assets in a way that ensures that they will continue to contribute to the quality of life our residents have now and into the future. Now, asset management helps us put some rigor and structure around the information we use to make strategic decisions. We use it for that our assets will continue to work well with no surprises our residents with services. Here are the basic asset management questions. What do we own? Where is it? What condition is it in? And what is the level of service, current and desired, that each asset provides? And what is the asset's remaining useful life with service life? Which assets are the most critical? And what is the level of risk to their function and sustainability? And what do we need to do to sustain the services provided by each asset? When do we, when do we need it by and what will it cost? So think about these questions for a moment. As stewards of our community assets, how confident are we that we have this information readily available? And if we don't, what would it take to get into a position where we could answer those questions with confidence? So for local governments engaging in an asset management process allows us to answer the fundamental question of how do we best care for the assets that deliver services to our residents, the very services that they rely on every day? And what they truly want is safe, sustainable services delivered in a predictable and cost-effective manner. So in truth, our residents don't want to have to think about it. They just want it to be, they just want it to happen without any unpleasant surprises or inconvenient disruptions. Our job is to manage assets and deliver services in the smoothest and most physical and responsible manner possible. As important as it is to understand what asset management is, it is equally important to understand what it is not. There are ingredients that contribute to the recipe, but in the same way that flour is not bread, these things are not asset management. Although asset management is not a standalone plan, asset management plans, software, and data collection can all be useful ingredients that can support holistic and integrated asset management practices. Everyone has a role to play. The role of an elected official is to provide sound governance over the delivery of services that in turn provide our residents quality of life. Given that council controls the strategic direction and required resources, it is critical that elected officials understand their role in asset management. Now, asset management is an ongoing process that leads to safe, sustainable services delivered in a predictable, cost-effective manner. It does take time and it does take effort. It is a program that doesn't appear overnight and it can take years to fully implement, so we need to get started. Some of you might be asking, we do this all the time, don't we? And the answer in part is yes, but not fully. In reality, we have been doing generally, what we have been doing generally falls in between accidental, intentional, necessarily reactive, and when possible proactive. So over time, community needs have changed and expectations have grown. Cost of our assets and services have increased, but our investment in them has not kept pace. Too often it has been, if it isn't broke, leave it until tomorrow. But there are always other areas where our precious budgets are required. When we fail to consider full costs of things like preventative maintenance, evolving operations, and asset renewal, the investment we make in our assets is likely to be insufficient. And our assets are nearing the end of their useful lifespan faster than we can cut replacing them. The asset management process acts as a toolset. It reveals the extent to which we have inadequately invested in the full life cycle cost of our assets. Let's think about the benefits of asset management, what asset management can bring to the community, and how it can help our community run more effectively and what problems it can solve. Let's go back to what our residents want. Safe and sustainable services delivered in a predictable and cost-effective manner. And it is all, it is all about service. The asset management process, it formalizes existing management practices and it gives some rigor and structure and sound information. It helps us to determine how best to invest in our assets so that our residents can continue to enjoy the services and amenities that contribute to their quality of life so that they can receive the value of those services without disruption. Now, people get irritated when they experience disruptions or poor quality services or when they're expected by not net. Asset management can help us reduce the risk of these unpleasant surprises by planning for the future, manage inherent risks, maintain our assets over the whole lifespan, and fundamentally invest our limited resources wisely. Asset management is that system. It's a holistic approach to planning, budgeting, decision-making driven by solid data. It is based on expected levels of service and is subject to the changing, and it is not subject to the changing guss of political winds. The asset management process allows us to engage in intentional rather than reactionary or accidental oversight of the services we provide. Now, what are the main components of asset management process? They are performance, risk, and cost. And this pretty simple formula when implemented and followed is what allows us to deliver safe and sustainable services in a predictable and cost-effective manner, giving our residents what they want and need. Now, this comes back to our definition of asset management. It is a process used in decision-making to help us figure out how we care for the infrastructure that delivers valuable service to our community in a way that one considers current and future needs, and this is a proper one component, manages risk and opportunities, and this is the risk component, uses resources wisely, and that's the cost component. Now, each of the components of asset management guidelines has actually answered the following question. Does it what it is supposed to do and at the level we expect? Performance measures are used to indicate how the city is delivering services at the level that is aligned with the strategic direction. There are two types of performance measures, customer performance measure and technical performance measure. Customer performance measure is the service a customer receives or how the customer experiences the service, such as frequency of service disruptions or appearance of facility. And the technical performance measure, measures of service that the organization provides and may use technical indicators or performance such as the number of times public toilets are cleaned each day or the average ratings of playgrounds or sidewalks or the average wait time at an intersection. The response time to an auto complaint is an example of a technical performance measure. What are the risks and consequences of this service being disrupted or discontinued? For example, is there, there is a big difference between service disruption of a walking or a riding trail compared to the service disruption of our underground utilities or our Highway 14 heading into LA when there's a earthquake. So identifying the city's critical assets and critical infrastructure models allow the city to target investment, refine investigative activities, maintenance plans, and capital expenditures as the critical areas through some renewal or determination inspection program. So how much money do we need to maintain and replace our assets? We don't want surprise service failures that last our projected budget for the year. The components of an asset management process that produces value are performance, risk, and cost. And once again, this pretty simple formula is what allows us to deliver safe and sustainable services in a predictable and cost-effective manner, giving our residents what they want and need. But simple doesn't mean easy. Once implemented, asset management helps to up municipality's balance, performance, risk, and cost over the asset's lifecycle to make better informed infrastructure decisions that maximize value to your community. Now, how are we getting started in Palmdale? And I would like to introduce Jim to give an overview here.
Thank you, Maria. Thank you, council, mayor and council members. So Chuck already touched on this a little bit. The project was a huge success mostly because of the staff within Public Works themselves. And the reason why we were able to come in 10% under budget is because of those guys and them buying into this system. And the way we did that was they were involved from the very beginning of the process. When we first put the RFP together, we had breakout sessions with every single one of the groups. Hey, what are the features and functions you want this software to have? And we put our RFP together. And then after we got the RFPs back, everybody got to review the RFPs. Each group got to review the RFPs that came back, our proposals that came back. And then when we picked our top three and we started our demos, we went right back into those groups. And every single one of those groups had their own breakout sessions for demos. And it's honestly, you know, Bruce and I used to talk about this when we were going through the early parts of the process, that it was nice to see 20 guys from the streets crews sitting together in the demo room asking questions about these vendors. Hey, can the software do this? How do you handle this type of situation? So once we got it narrowed down to our final vendor and we picked Lucity, now we started the process. And the first thing we decided on early on was we're going to do this in two phases. We split it up into sewer and fleet maintenance were the first phase and the rest of the department was the second phase. The reason we did this was these two divisions had the most complete accounting of all of their assets. So, you know, sewer, we already knew as we had just taken over the sewer from the county within the city, how many miles of pipe there was, how many manholes there were. They were already working on a very, in a very simple asset management system, but this actually gave them the tools to do the work out in the field. The guys were carrying iPad, you know, they carry iPads out in the field. They're able to open and close work orders on the road out in the field. It's, nothing is on paper anymore. Everything is being done from the iPad, all the inspections. And this gave us our, I hate to use the term test, but that's what these guys were. They were our test dummy. We said, hey, we're going to throw you guys out there live. We're going to build the system as you're using it. And we did. Same thing with fleet. We already knew how many vehicles they were. Adam did a great job and his crew did a great job. Everything, all the equipment was accounted for. We put all of those lists together. We got everything into the system. And they started producing work orders on these items, one right after another. And even with only his three guys, they're keeping track of everything that's going on. Now, they're doing everything from the desktop as opposed to the iPad, but that shows the versatility of the system is that it's easy for guys to go back and forth between doing stuff on the desktop and then working out in the field with the iPads. So as we finished up that first phase, we got ready to go into our second phase. And while those two divisions were actually working in the system, the other divisions were busy getting their assets together. What are the critical items that we need to keep track of? Street maintenance, it's all the street segments, sidewalk, signs, urban greens and ground spaces. It's all the basins, the parks, the landscape maintenance districts. You know, facilities, it's all the buildings, traffic, you know, it's all the streetlights, which we had just taken over from Edison. You know, we've got 18,000 streetlights, you know, and all of those are accounted for on the maps. So now, we took what we learned working with fleet and sewer and we projected it into both of these groups. And we were able to not only start and finish within a few months. You can see on the chart here, it's less than six months. We actually got the whole department live, even through COVID, between, you know, the middle of 2019 to the middle of 2020. So in one year, we got the whole department up and live and managed to get everybody to use it. We've started doing follow-up meetings with all the divisions. Bruce has been critical in that to make sure that everybody is still buying into it. And they are. The guys are still using it. I think at our last count, Maria, we had how many? 80,000 work orders that have gone through the system in one year across all the divisions. So that'll tell you how much the guys are actually using the system. They've bought into the system. They, they've, they come back to both Maria and I, hey, can we add this? Can we do this? And we're starting to think of other situations where we can push this out into the city. My position is now in IT and I've talked with Stuart, hey, maybe we want to start tracking where all the computers are in the city and using the system to track those because those are assets that we're utilizing. So we're starting to come up with additional aspects on how to use the system and actually track all of our assets within the city. Now Maria's going to give you guys a little demo of the software so you can see what it actually looks like.
Right, and this is what we were talking about earlier with 80, almost 85,000 work orders that we created and worked through. And we can, and the information that's in this is, you know, the cost information that we need. need for creating budgets in the future, figuring out condition information, that's going to be something in the future that we're going to get into the system as well so that we can a bit more of a predictive maintenance, as well as predicting our, you know, CIP programs, as well as our renewal projects that are needed in more critical areas. And I know a hot topic for the council is the illegal dumping that, that we're, you know, we're doing in the field. This is something that we can, this is the information actually that we have been gathering and Jim has been producing information that's in the system where we can now locate, you know, month by month, the use of the one hot spots are and whether there's any patterns over month over month. But it also allows us to track the costs and the hours and man-hours, the equipment hours to be able to do the kind of work that we're doing in the field and give a more tangible perspective on how, where our, but where our cost, where our money is going basically and where we can spend it in a more effective manner. And I don't know if you want to add anything else, Jim? And that's pretty much, pretty much the end of the presentation.
Okay, I guess that's the end of the actual presentation and I think I would just, again, thank the council for allowing us to bring this, you know, first of all, to, you know, for allocating funds to implement this system. And you can see that they, that the staff has really embraced this and, you know, there are a lot of really exciting things coming in the future as well. One of the next things that we're going to be doing is actually integrating this with the, our asset, or our, sorry, our financial software. And so that'll make us be able to budget pretty fluidly between the Lucidity program and actually combining up with our annual or semi annual budgets. So with that, I think I'd like to see if council has any questions or comments and we can open it up at this time.
Let me, so we, so we can avoid a pileup on the questions. I'll start on screen with Mr. Bishop. And Jim, by the way, somebody put a, some kind of a weird backdrop. I think he got hacked, but.
Oh, that's, no, that's for JJ. Bruins, the Bruins won tonight 2-0 and Brad Marchand had the winning goal again.
Well, you know, it happens sometimes, sometimes. The clock, a broken clock is right twice a day too. Mr. Bishop, sir, you have anything? Can you hear me now? We can't hear you.
Sorry about that. Can you circle back to me? I still want, I want to hear what you guys have to say. I'm still making it.
Ms. Bentecourt?
No, I'm good and I will apologize for losing my link, so I missed a little bit of it, but I'm, I got most of it.
Thank you. Mr. Loa?
Very interesting presentation. It seems like it's something that can help our city. Apparently it's already helping and, you know, it's, it's good. It's a good way to manage what we have.
Mr. Creer?
I do have a question, a couple of questions. What was the score you're in on the game?
Two nothing.
I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm trying to maintain control, so.
Thanks for the update. Two nothing, that's a good score. So what was the cost of this software and is there an annual maintenance fee?
The, the original contract price was, I want to say $270,000. We came in at just under $250,000 and that was with an amendment to increase our licenses to a site-wide license. So there was actually no amendments for any of the actual work on the software. Our annual maintenance fee, I believe, is $30,000 a year.
Okay.
But we do have a site-wide license, which means we can install it on any iPad and any desktop within the city.
Okay. And the next question is more for maybe the city manager. Where are we on the permitting software?
We are doing a review. We got the bids in, closed the bids. The staff is doing a review of that. But to Jim's point earlier, I did, I did not want to miss that, that this project brought the staff in early on of all the departments who were going to touch this. So I commend staff for being inclusive in this process and I think that's why it's so successful.
And that's, that's what I wanted to make sure of, that the permitting process follows the same approach to this program. Have everybody included in selecting the vendor so that we don't experience what the bad experience we had, what, three, four years ago? And it ended up costing us a lot of money and we don't have a system. Thank you guys for working together and putting this effort and including all the departments, the ones that actually use the system and getting the input and having a successful software program that is beneficial to the residents and the city and all the employees. Thank you.
Jim, question for you. How does, how does the, the work or the complaint process, does it integrate into this or does that still require a manual printout and then interpretation and entry? Or does, if somebody calls in a pothole or a broken streetlight or a pile of junk, does that promulgate into the system for somebody to deal with at that point?
Yes. So what that does, Mayor, is it creates a work request. And that's, that was one of the, the early things we had to hammer through the guys' heads. It was a running joke with Bruce and I that they needed to understand the difference between a work request and a work order. So work request comes in, it gets routed, it gets put into the system, it gets routed to the department or the, I'm sorry, the division that is most likely to be involved with it. And then depending on the type, the supervisor has the capability of immediately converting it into a work order or the guys can go out into the field with a work request and because they have the iPads, they, the determination of, is it something that gets converted into a work order? Is it something that gets diverted somewhere else? So the example I like to use is somebody calls and says that there's a leak coming from one of the parks. So, you know, Steve is proactive, he gets the work request, he sends Paul Wood out there. Paul gets out there and it turns out the leak is on the other side of the meter box, so it's not our responsibility. It's the Palm Dale Water District's responsibility or the LA County Water Works. So our guys, so we don't create a bogus work order. What he does is he's, he contacts the water department, he lets them know, he does what he can out there, but it doesn't go into our system as a bogus work order. And it turns out something that our guys have to fix, he converts it into, and he's already done the investigation, so he converts it into a work order and it's like, oh, okay. You know, I, you know, he can assign guys to it right then and there. If it's something that he can fix, he can literally do the work, assign himself the time, his vehicle, whatever materials he used, close the work order and all of that gets captured right away.
So how do you deal with, a great example is this dumping thing. We've got thousands of man-hours from volunteers that have gone in, only a small fraction of those were actually reported. Somebody would just say, hey, there's dumping over in Barrel Springs, or there's dumping over in East Palm Dale off of 70th. But without individual reports, how does that get converted to get on the graph so that we know that something's a problem area? I mean, I pick up junk all the time and my wife doesn't let me throw it in her car, but I'll throw it in the back of my truck. How does that get captured?
So it's, it's getting captured two different ways. So we have some guys that are dedicated that that's all they're doing. So what they'll do is they'll create a work order at the beginning of the day saying that they're going to do illegal dumping pickup. And they'll drive around for their 10-hour shift and every location that they pick something up, they drop a pinpoint on the map. And that map that Maria showed is all of the locations for March where we picked up trash or we picked up, you know, illegal dumping that were within the right of way. And so Andy, Andy Aragga, who drives the big truck with the claw on it, that picks up most of the stuff, Andy might turn in one work order one day and it picked up stuff at 15 different locations. So he has a single work order for the day, but he's picked up trash in 15 locations and all 15 of those locations show up in his work order.
Okay. So that's, that's basically where I'm at there. So if somebody's involved and they're, they're cleaning up piles or something, is it legit for them to mark that as, to put in that report, that online report that's on their website, but then in the comment section say, I handled it, I took it home and put it again? So that you got a record of it, that there's been a problem there because that may be something that's dumped there tomorrow and the next day and the next day?
Yeah. So one of the other things, and I'll use Andy again as an example. So he'll take, he'll take some of the work requests that also come in for illegal dumping, like somebody says, oh, there's, you know, contractor material out here off of 70th or whatever. And what he'll do is he can add those locations to his overall work order and add those work requests so that when he closes his work order at the end of the day, it also converts all of those work requests so that we know that those called-in locations are also being tracked as part of the normal day-to-day routine. Or it could be something as simple as, you know, it could be some of the landscape guys and they're out at a basin doing some work and if they pick up trash, it's, it's literally 15 seconds to create a work order and say that they picked up trash as illegal dumping and they throw it in the back of their truck and they close the work order out and so those locations get tracked also.
Great, thanks. Mr. Bishop, did you have anything that wasn't hit on here?
Oh, yeah. Well, I'm still going to go over a couple of things, but yeah, I mean, this, this is great software. This is what we've been waiting for, for a while now. I like all the points that were made. As long as we have staff participation on this, we can really get an idea of where our numbers at and how we can plan and budget for things. Obviously this year with the work orders, we're going to see more trash pick up than ever, just because that's where our focus has been on. But I'm looking forward to down the line seeing those numbers and seeing where, where resources, resources were spent, whether it was picking up trash or working on parks or fixing dry town. And by the way, I don't think I didn't miss the dry town pictures in the background because I know that's part of asset risk management as well.
Yes. And, and the same type of like mapping for problem locations, this is, this is, you know, illegal dumping is such a hot topic, but this applies to graffiti also.
Everything.
That's another, that's another one like that or potholes.
If you're, if this is going to tell us everything.
Exactly.
Where, where are we spending this money? Where are we spending this time? How can we be more efficient? And I'm looking forward to seeing these numbers down the line.
Yeah, and, you know, give us a, give us another good year of putting data into the system and we'll be able to really show you, hey, these are hotspots for dumping, these are hotspots for graffiti.
Right.
Vandalism, you know, whatever we, we want to track. And, and the way the system's built is when we're talking about the asset tracking, it's from the ground up. So when we talk about, let's say we talk about vandalism at one of the bathrooms at one of the parks, well, that counts towards the overall maintenance for the park too. It's not just the bathroom. It's, if we want to run a report, hey, what are all the work orders that we've done at this park? It would show everything that's associated to the park for every single one of the assets that's associated with the park, same thing with any of the buildings and other things.
Right, we can get as specific as we want, but there's no need to get that specific. We need the general idea of.
Well, some, some things were, and that's one of the things, like when we first set the system up, it's like, okay, how specific do we want to be?
The part is the software will let you do whatever you want.
Whatever you pay a consultant to do.
Exactly. But it's got to be understandable and reasonable for the staff to go in and file it under, you know.
Correct. Yeah, that's why, that's why like for the Development Services Building, we just call plumbing problems plumbing. We don't say it's this bathroom and this toilet and this, you know, this thing. But you know how much we spend on plumbing repairs. Now, for certain assets, we tie it directly to the asset, like the air conditioning unit, the air conditioning unit, big ticket items. So we want to know how much are we spending on each individual unit?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, well, H-Vac, that's its own trade, definitely. Yeah. So I'm excited to see these numbers. That's, that's fascinating. Thank you guys for finally getting this together.
Having, having been through this in, in my former life, moving from the three-by-five cards to the computer, I know how arduous that conversion process can be. So thanks for the update on that. So thanks, guys.
Mayor, can I say one thing? Just real quick, I want to thank council for the support when we brought this forward and your support of our technology improvements. And I want to thank Maria for two things. One, great presentation tonight. And two, God bless you with a Blackhawks fan and a Bruins fan there. You can never win an argument. Renee, your duty next week is to block out any of these things or just change it for Councilman Creo's sake, just put the Philadelphia Union Football logo up there.
Approved.
We'll get them back next week.
Careful with your Blackhawks, okay?
JJ, you know, I could go with Fenway Park if you want.
Got him off, Renee.
Wrigley, Wrigley, Jeez, Wrigley. All right, we good?
Want to check for public comment?
Okay. Was there anything coming in this item, sir?
Not at this time, man.
Okay, all right.
Go Phils.
All right.
If I could, Mayor, I've got, I've got one more, one more point. This is, this is much less obvious and I'm going to tie it back to the local hazard litigation plan in a, in a, and several of you have been involved in, in a FEMA, I guess, an emergency and know the importance of financial tracking and how that relates to how much you get back from the, from the.
There's whole, there's whole trucks full of bean counters anytime this goes down.
That's right. So, so this system, we are, we're planning for that event and this system will allow us to be able to track those things much better and not miss out on any of that funding because we didn't do proper, I guess, documentation.
Yeah, we, we actually, we actually have a work order type that's specific to FEMA events. So if, if our guys, our guys can actually be proactive and if, you know, I'm going to, you know, put everything, I don't want to put everything on Bruce, but Bruce is a smart guy and he can, he knows when this stuff is coming in. If Bruce thinks that this is going to be a FEMA event, he can tell the crews, hey, start logging everything under the FEMA work order type. And if it turns out it is a FEMA event, we've already started capturing all the information and it makes it very simple for us to say, these are all the work orders that are associated to the FEMA event.
I made carpal tunnel work in those. All right, thanks, Jim. Thanks, Chuck. All right. So that's it and thanks, everybody. Great presentation, good meeting and we'll stand adjourned until the meeting. Thank you.